Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, January 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station in the meeting room. Uh, just for the record, uh, is anybody else besides Lake Cam recording this meeting? Uh, no one else is recording this meeting, so at this time I'd like to start our first agenda item, which is a continued public hearing for 156 County Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Garrett Pecorilla, civil engineer with GPI, um, here returning from the early November meeting, uh, for this proposed self-storage facility expansion project at 156 County Street. Um, so like I said, I was in front of the board in November. Uh, there were a few comments that came out of that meeting, uh, which have been addressed. I did provide a comment response letter, which you should have. Um, it should have been in that Dropbox link as well as what you just received a copy of. And I guess my goal was to kind of just review those quickly with you, let you know what the comments were and what I did to address them. Um, so I'll kind of just flip through, uh, the letter. Um, actually, I should know first, one of the items was, I think you were looking for a conservation approval, which I had forgotten since then. That's not really addressed in the letter, but, um, we did receive that.
I was there.
You were there, yeah, you know. So, uh, back to just kind of going through the comments one by one. I'll just start from the top, um, and actually, I'll back up again. Before I get into those comments, I should note that the first three, the first three comments, the ones on the first page, those came out of a comment I received at the initial planning board hearing that we should have a peer review of the drainage design, essentially the drainage grading and drainage plan. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Resnick had made that comment. I know he's no longer with the town. Um, but that did occur and uh, the board may be aware that I, we received a pretty, uh, pretty substantial review letter from the peer review consultant. And I had a conversation, uh, with Mr. Resnick about it. We set up a meeting, uh, to discuss it because it kind of seemed like a little bit more than we discussed at the meeting. Uh, we, Mark and I spoke about it and he agreed with me completely. Um, and I believe Kathy was aware of these discussions. Unfortunately, Mark's not here to speak to it. Uh, but essentially, Mark and I both agreed that there were three comments in that letter by environmental partners that should be addressed because they were related to what we gave them as a scope to review, uh, which was essentially look at the drainage design, look at the hydrology to the pipes, make sure, you know, we're not proposing anything all that complicated from a stormwater management aspect, but looking at pipe size and cals made sense. So we did that. Um, and though these first three comments are the three comments that were really related to what the review was supposed to be. So that's what we responded to. Um, so the first one was pretty straightforward. Add, uh, rip rap flare and at the drainage outlet. Probably should have wrote these comments in opposite order to start with the site plan, but, uh, we did add rip rap at the outlet into the existing drainage basin here. Um, so that, that was a comment as well as a flared end, uh, structure there. We just added a pipe. Um, I also upsized the pipe, which I'll get to in a second. So it was more appropriate to be designed that way. Uh, the second comment was regarding an operations and maintenance plan. Uh, so that one, we obviously what, what we're proposing is just really a couple of catch basins and pipe, um, for, for a closed drainage system at least, and it's not a ton to maintain, but in speaking to Mr. Resnick, um, I agreed, you know, providing something is okay and was happy to. The way we kind of came to the resolution that we're not touching into the, the existing drainage, there should have been an operations and maintenance plan done for that development. It was not done by GPI. I searched, I asked my client, we, we looked and we looked, we couldn't find one. So what we agreed on was that I, I would submit one, which I did. Um, that covers, you know, the general good housekeeping, street sweeping, um, and obviously management.
Does that include the entire area, your plan?
Correct. It includes everything.
Good, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, comment two on the letter, um, the response letter, uh, I'm sorry, that was two. Number three was, as I already kind of mentioned, look at pipe size and calculations for the 25-year, uh, storm intensity. Uh, so that was limited to, or not just, you know, conveyance pipe, actually like drain pipes, if that's all we have in certain sections. So we looked at everything. Um, I provided calculations for those pipes and I did run a 25-year storm. Uh, originally I wasn't looking at a 25-year storm, so I guess it was good too, since that's really what the town wants, so I should have done that. Um, the cows were right on the edge of being at capacity the way they were, so I upsized them to be conservative. Um, so all the cows are in there, you, you'll see the, the capacity versus the design flaw is a pretty big disparity. Um, so we should be good to go there. Um, and we feel we addressed that. So that was the only three from the peer review.
No.
At least, um, like I said, Mr. Resnick and I discussed, that should be addressed and have been. Um, so now flipping to the second page of the review letter, that, that's where I kind of just highlighted the three comments that I took from our previous meeting. Uh, so those were starting top to bottom, uh, being really site plan revisions, the first one being, um, oh, sorry. We have some areas between and around the rear of the buildings that are not, uh, that are meant to just be pedestrian access. Um, so along the back here, that's six feet wide, and then there's this five-foot alley here, and another six, one about six foot, um, paved pathway behind the building. Uh, we were asked to do something to deter pedestrians from, or I'm sorry, vehicles from accidentally entering or being able to enter. So I put permanent baller, fight ballers blocking all of these, so no one can literally cannot drive in there. Uh, and I think it's good. It makes sense. Uh, I added ballards around corners of the buildings as we discussed, too, just for safety. Yeah, for the building that's in the best interest of the end user anyway. Um, so that was how I addressed that comment. The next comment was regarding an existing fence that is along the, uh, southerly portion of the property behind this rear proposed building here. We had called out that, um, the fence was probably going to be disturbed during construction, so we said replace in kind as needed. Essentially, we discussed using this project as an opportunity to shift it back a bit. So I, and the reason I recall from the meeting was snow storage, it could be used as snow storage. Um, I think there were a few different reasons, but we did that. I shifted it back. I should have shown the existing tree line on this plan, but I shifted it back as far as I could before I was in the tree line, and then we start clearing trees, is essentially what I did. Um, and then the third comment was regarding building elevations. We didn't provide actual building elevations with our original site plan application. What I did was I provided photos of the existing buildings and essentially wrote in our, um, narrative that the plan is to match those buildings exactly as they did with the original four buildings when they added these four. Um, but I understand it's a checklist item when you, the board requested them, so we put them together. Uh, and you, uh, put two of them, and you should have 11 by 17s of these. So there's three sheets. I, I guess I, I don't want to waste any more time. I, I'll let you ask any questions you want about them, and I'm happy to go over them in more detail if you want. But essentially, these were meant to show you what each building, so there's one sheet for each facility, proposed facility showing all sides of the building and what they're going to look like with typical dimensions, height, everything. Um, I know what issue was, or something that was brought up was lighting, and we discussed not really having a need for a full photometric plan, but the board wanted to see where the lighting would be on the buildings roughly, so I have shown those on here. It's called out on, on this one, just wall bounds of lighting. Um, so all of these are, are just, you know, kind of wall packs on the building that are going to match what's out there. And I provided photos that hopefully you can see what those look like as well. Um, so with that, um, I, yeah, I think I went over everything we've changed and why we changed, and hopefully I didn't miss any comments along the way, but I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions.
Michelle, do you have any comments?
I mean, I feel like he's addressed everything that we were concerned about. The only thing that's a little sticking point for me was just the sign brightness. That, that was the only thing.
Okay, I, I'm happy to, uh.
If, I mean, and not even that it has to be shut off. I know he said something about the time, just if you can tone down the lumens on it a little bit.
Okay, so you said it's still kind of the same.
It's still pretty bright.
I'm not local, so I don't see it, but I'll, I'll mention it.
So, I mean, other than that, I feel like we, we could draw up some conditions and move forward.
Yeah. John, do you have any comments?
No, I think I said he, I think he got all the comments that we had asked.
Yeah. Jack, do you have anything? Yeah, so I think we're in a good spot. I think you're satisfied everything that we've asked for, and it's, I would say a good project. Um, so to close our site plan review process, we're going to draft up a decision that's filed with the town clerk. We'll put, we have basically some standard conditions that we put in there. Uh, just per Michelle's thing, I'm just, we'll put a condition in there that all additional lights added be dark sky compliant to comply with our bylaw. Um, and because this is a private project, it's not like a, a roadway that's going to be accepted by the town. Our final will be that you're just going to submit an ASB to the building department just to show that catch basin elevations and things that he doesn't require. I know he's going to want to ASB on the buildings, on the foundations. Just for the stormwater, really, just to make sure that everything meets what you said it was, and you'll give him a stamped plan with that. Uh, and that will close out the project when you're done. Uh, so generally, we're going to vote on this now, but it'll take one more meeting for us to vote on the final conditions and sign that. I don't think you need to come back for that, but at that point, it'll get filed to the town clerk and we'll have Kathy notify you that that's all been done.
Sounds great.
So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented, and we will draft final conditions to put in that decision with town clerk. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good to go. Thank you, Garrett. Kathy, do you know anything about, uh, the gentleman that asked to come in about my parting?
Nope. I mean, I emailed him the meeting notice and if he had any questions, and he never, never got back to me, so I don't know what happened.
Okay. Well, we'll continue on with other business, and if he shows up, shows up, or if not, I guess he might come next time. Or he can call. If you wanted to give him my number, he can call and ask some stuff, but I don't want to. I'm not going to answer opinions of the entire board to him, you know, but I'll talk to him at least. Uh, so I'm going to guess on item three, Pauline's path update, do you have something on that?
Um, I do. So this was submitted by, um, Bill Logan. The funds for a performance bond, and there was some discussion back and forth if, because this was done incorrectly, a covenant was never put on this subdivision, and it was discussed if you should put one on and then he could just go and release the lots. And then I believe what happened is, um, Mark had emailed Nate, just giving him authorization to release the lots, to release the permits, I mean.
So is there a covenant or no covenant?
There's no covenant. So it didn't make sense to put a covenant on just to also simultaneously release it.
Have all the lots been released?
Well, they were never held, so I don't know what we, he is in the process.
So, well, I think part of the problem with that was, if you recall, and it was sort of during COVID, so Jamie had got our approval, but he asked that we not sign the plan because I think that the property hadn't transferred.
Right, I think there was a problem.
The applicant didn't want assigned subdivision approval that the previous owner could obtain, so he asked that delay. And it took a while for them to clear title in order for the property transfer to happen, and that's when Jamie came back, the signatures had gone stale. So I'm sure that what, that's what triggered the delay in the process. So all right, I mean, I'll probably want to just follow up with Nate on this, but good to know.
Yeah, no, we have the, the bond, the funds for the bond, so.
We have the funds for the bond? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss, uh, PPA and DPA, uh, PDA, which is priority protection and priority development areas in town.
Helping maps, even though they're a little bit older, and this one is, um, from 2013. Uh, just to show priority development areas are in purple and the priority protection areas are in green. And as you can see, Lakeville right in here compared to a lot of the surrounding communities is very much lacking. So if we can designate some additional, uh, priority protection and priority development areas, um.
Are those areas there what was proposed?
So this is existing. These are the existing, um, it is a little bit different than what shows on the map, because like I said, this is 2013 and here we are. Ten years later, so I'm assuming that's the discrepancy, because I know some of this was not included in, you know, here. So, um, been speaking to Nate about this, you know, he was, he suggested, I was going to, why not look at, um, some protected land? Why not put anything that's in chapter protection already? Why not designate it as well as?
First thing I'm thinking is, why isn't Betty's neck on there?
I don't know.
Two hundred and twenty acres that the town already owns, and it's easy thing to just show as priority protection. It doesn't hurt to label it, right?
Especially if there's potentially.
Even though we've already protected it, it should show as priority, and we are protecting it.
And then even like I thought the water resources, if we could do like an overlay that kind of combines the protected areas, the water resource, um, and the Lakeville habitats. I think a lot of the water resource and the habitats are, are in similar areas anyways. Um, if we could do some sort of an overlay to try to just pull out those areas. And then also, I think we want to look and see where do we want development, because that would be what we could designate as priority development as well. I think the protection areas are easier to designate, um, and maybe start there and then kind of look more closely, where do we want some designated development?
Business growth.
Correct.
Because you say development and it's, that's a generic term, could be residential, which I don't think that that's, we have plenty of that all the time growing in town, so I think it'd be nice if that was a clearer term. I'm not saying you as much as.
Right.
To build it out.
Maybe there is. So my thought is, um, you know, I'd like to find out what do we have left for Serpide Hours? Is it something that they can do? Just, so Serpide has these maps on file, so if they can just kind of lay those maps, I'm not sure if they can or not, but I would think they might have a way of maybe overlaying those, those maps so that we can kind of get a visual and just kind of go through and pick what we want to designate.
Kathy, do you know what uh, day of the month Serpide, Serpide meets? It's a Wednesday, isn't it?
I think, I'm not sure though.
Uh, who could find that out?
I mean, I can find it out.
So Michelle, are you willing to do this work?
So with Serpide, yeah, I, yeah, definitely. I mean, if I can, um, I know Nora was some.
So, yeah, ju- jump ahead in our agenda a little bit. This is kind of, it all ties in, so.
Right.
Unfortunately, Nora Klein has, uh, attended her letter of resignation. For health reasons, she can no longer participate. So we're, we're down a member, and she was our Serpide representative member. Uh, also being without the, the planner, uh, he also attended most of the Serpide communications. Uh, so we didn't technically have this on the agenda, so I don't think we could appoint you tonight, but I think if you two gentlemen agree that we, if there's a Serpide meeting between now and our next meeting, that we would allow Michelle to attend in, fill in for Nora as a Serpide representative. And Kathy, could you make a note to put on the next agenda to reappoint a Serpide representative from the planning board? You guys good with that? Okay, so unofficially, if there's a Serpide meeting between now and our next meeting, and you can attend, please do. Uh.
And I'd like to reach out and like I said, maybe find out what we have for hours left, and if, so there's two things. So one, to see about the priority protection and development, I want to get that, whatever information we share with, um, Mark before he left. See if I can just gather what that was. I know there was a couple of meetings and they had kind of pointed out some areas.
That, Kathy, is that something, maybe we got any notes from Mark about the priority protection and priority development meetings with Serpide?
As far as I know, there, there were no notes. There was a, a discussion.
Yeah, and I know you gave us the minutes of when he brought that to meeting, but.
I spoke to Taylor today and she said that Serpide will be contacting the town within, probably within a month.
Okay.
Regarding this, so.
All right, so we'll move in that direction.
All right. Um, so then the next, so this kind of goes with the next item. Uh, so that's priority protection and development areas. We just want to get an, uh, updated map, include some more areas.
So item five, existing zoning areas compared to current uses.
So now this, here's our current zoning map. And here is our current land use by parcel map. And once again, if this is something that Serpide could, and I, I tried to, you know, do a faded copy of our zoning districts over it. Um, I was hoping maybe Serpide could just like do an outline, so we can see zoning outlines on this map. And then once again, I know we talked about getting the use more conforming with the zoning and, um.
Try to make the zoning more conforming with the current actual uses.
Correct. So that would be something, obviously, we'd have to go to town meeting. I think it will take a little bit, uh, more delving into by this board, just to kind of check off anything that we might consider changing. Um, but I think that would be a step in that direction is to once again, maybe utilize Serpide to come up with a map that shows the existing zoning, just drawn out on, um, the land use map that they already have. So that's what I have for those two, if you guys.
Yeah, and I know we've talked about that several times, so I, I definitely think if that could be all rolled into one, doing the two separate maps, keep the priority protection, priority development, makes sense while you're looking at the direct development portion of that to do the update the zoning. I think the biggest discrepancy is our business zoning compared to actual use. Biggest, the biggest joke, if you flip back to the other one, is the big red triangle in the middle, which is business zone, and that's Ted Williams camp. And, and the land all around it. And it's, you know, it's really, it's, it's more than that, because there's a lot of residential homes in the, I'll call it the, the western point of that triangle. There's no, really not much business there. Uh, so we probably could, should reconsider.
And that's industrial.
Zone industrial, but.
Business, industrial.
And that's another, uh, I will, I'll call it a a, a mistake with good intentions in the past, uh, because we were bumpkinville thirty, forty years ago. Zoning something industrial was their way of saying, we'll protect it from being residentially developed because nobody will ever develop it. Because business won't come here, because we're bumpkinville, but we're not anymore. Through urban sprawl, it's, there's the pressure to now find any land like that to, we sorry, make an Amazon building or whatever. So it's worth looking at that too, for sure.
Well, those are just two items that I think Serpide may, and it might be pretty helpful with, um, getting some apps for.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Uh, minutes from November nine.
Um, move to accept the minutes as drafted for November ninth, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Uh, did we have any correspondence, Kathy?
No.
Our next meeting is January 25th, 7:00 PM here at the Lakeville Police Station. Um, last item on the agenda is to discuss a recommendation for the select board regarding town planner position, uh, and a possible vote. And I'll say, I was asked on Friday to attend the select board meeting uh, on Monday of this week regarding the exit of Mark Resnick and what, what's going to go on. Uh, I made the recommendation at that time to them to not fill the position at least for three months, and we see how it goes. Uh, I work with Kathy. Uh, I, I think with what's in front of us, we can do that. We did it before Mark. Um, he did provide us some good templates and the portion of site plan review, uh, that, again, that we'll work on this week with what we just approved for 156 County. Um, so I guess I'm looking for you guys' opinion as to, we, we need to make an official vote recommendation to the select board regarding how this, uh, the either position either sits vacant, gets filled, or gets altered. Um, Miss, Michelle had sent around some, I guess it was job descriptions of planners from other towns. Uh, my only problem with two of them was my problem with the existing position we had was it was under the purview of the town administrator. Uh, so I'd like that changed anyway. Jack?
You know, I'm probably at least aware of all the things that Mark did, you know, during the day. I mean, he's seen it, he has a full-time job, and then he's all, went to all these meetings. Can we as a group backfill that? I mean, is, is that the intent? I mean, first of all, I, you know, I'll just take on any responsibility really, what, because right now, all I do is come to meetings and go.
Well, we're not, what I'm asking us to do is, we're not trying to go to the open space meeting, and we're not trying to uh, purchase land on behalf of the town, or we're not trying to go to the zoning board of appeals meeting. They, they're going to be asked the same question. Zoning board of appeals is going to be asked the same question in any other boards that the town planner had participated within, so. But my, one of my reasons for this is I, I keep hearing they're talking about, uh, a budget shortfall, and they're going to have to do a proposition two and a half override. And if we can get by without, you know, maybe it's a, we operate with a little bit of a crutch and get by and help the town out and shorten the budget by a little bit.
I have no problem doing that. I guess, but once again, with all, I mean, I don't know, with all the things that Mark did, can we maybe I said, you know, they're saying the same question over again, can we be able to fill it in, you know, in our own way, meet all those needs? I mean.
Again, we're, I'm not proposing that we fill the needs of ZBA, open space committee, or whatever else he helped outside of the planning board. I'm saying we can do the duties that he did for the planning board.
You know better than I whatever do, so if you think it's the right thing to do, I'm fine by me.
I mean, I think I got to see, um, you know, what it's like without a planner, what it's like with a planner. Um, knowing that we have extreme, you know, budget shortfalls coming our way, I I honestly, I'd rather see, you know, public safety be addressed prior to filling a position like this. Um, if, if it does come, you know, come to the fact that it, there is a need, um, I think it should be some sort of a combined, uh, position, uh, definitely, um, reevaluate the structure, the job description, um.
Do you combine Patty's job and Mark's job together as one?
No, I mean, that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, as far as I'm concerned, I think, um, you know, this board got on. you know, this board got on for a while without a town planner, I think my expectations were much different than the reality of it. And um I I think if we need a consultant, we should, you know, I I I, I, I think I already reached out to the select board to be included in budget discuss- discussions, so um potentially we could get consulting budgeted as opposed to.
EB basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that you, there are two or three different things we're looking at and talking about, but we wanna make one recommendation is that, and and again, I'd like to see it be that the planning board agreed that we would like the position to not be filled for at least three months, and we report back at the end of that time. Second task would be maybe at our next meeting, take some of this information that Michelle put in, um, e- emailed to you guys about planner positions. If we are gonna go back to this, I don't expect we have this answer tonight, that's why I say maybe we stave this one off. If you wanted to make a recommendation to alter the position so that maybe it worked better for this, I, my, my biggest problem with what we had was communication, was a lacking of communication, I would have liked that to be very different. Uh, so I wanna look at specific disciplines within the description of those uh job descriptions and make sure that communication was paramount and it was clearly called out as to how that would be directed within the job description, to make sure that right in the description, chair and vice chair are included and.
In all email correspondence.
Email correspondence as well as uh periodic updates, meaning whether it be daily or weekly updates, depending on how much business there is, just to let them know what's been asked.
I think there was a lot that wasn't public record even, though, there was a lot of offline conversations that that I'm just concerned that filling the position would lead to the same. So for me, yes, I I'm comfortable, we give the recommendation, give it three months, if there is determined that there is a a large need, that it not be on the same, you know, we'll look in a different direction.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that the planning board make a recommendation to the board of selectmen to not fill the planner position for at least three months, uh, and we will report back af- at the end of that time with uh further recommendation and what we feel our needs are.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
You got all that? I was waiting till you were done writing, so I disturbed. That's it?
Um, just one other thing, there will be a CPA public hearing on February twenty-ninth. So, um, I know I had hoped to get us on the agenda for a combined meeting, didn't happen. Um, so that is an opportunity for anybody to attend.
So the community preservation committee is meeting?
For, they're gonna hold a public hearing on February twenty-ninth, and that's gonna be an opportunity for public input as to how you want your CPA uh money spent.
CPA?
Yes. Tell your friends.
I'm sorry, did you say January twenty-nine or February?
February, yes, leap year.
Six thirty, seven?
What's that?
What time is it?
Uh, that I'm not sure, potentially six thirty, I would hope it's here, the police station.
All right.
But.
If I can make it, I will.
All right, very good. Uh, being that there is no other visit, do you have anything else, Kathy?
I do have a mile off for you to sign after.
Okay, uh, so I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, with discussion, uh, Kathy, you and I had spoke about adding to uh upcoming agenda, possibly looking at the rules and regs for the planning board, um. And I don't think we wanted to do the whole thing, we talked about either doing site plan review only or subdivision control only, just to look at, so do you guys have a preference as to, w- we should just talk about it at a public meeting, there are a number of things within both that we need to update, uh, for example, with site plan review nowhere in the rules and regulations does it say, provide building elevations because we've adopted architectural design standards. So that's one of those things that we need to add to site plan review. Uh, but then go to uh subdivision control, and with lots, we have the discrepancy of the upland circle, front yard circle. Uh, so building commissioner says that technically they need to ask for a waiver because the rules and regs say the wrong thing, so we need to clean that up.
Okay.
Uh.
And didn't we discuss also um coming up with a checklist that goes along with that as well to keep things like that missing covenant?
We probably did.
I thought so.
Did you make a draft, or do we just?
No, I thought, I thought, I thought Mark, it was something that Mark was gonna work on.
We were working on that.
He was?
We were working on it.
Would you mind throwing that in as part of the material on on whatever draft of that checklist you have? When we have that discussion on either site plan review or subdivision control? All right, so something on the agenda next time, I know we have some stuff already coming down the pipeline, but uh so we have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.